Okay, at this time we will call to order Miami Level Schools Board of Education meeting. Roll call please. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cremens?
Here.
Ms. Grace?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Thank you. You all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time we need a motion to adopt the agenda. Mr. Cremens? Ms. Grace? Roll call please. Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cremens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, at this time I need a motion for the reading of the minutes, September 25th to, I'm sorry, August 28, 2018. Mr. Second? Seaver. Mr. Cremens? Roll call please. Mr. Cremens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
This time communications agenda visitors to the board, Mr. Trump?
Thank you, we have several items on the communications side tonight. First of all, I'd like to welcome our student board grab on the court of temple. Later on the agenda, we'll normally appoint you, Courtney. And your seat usually is down here by me because many are very mature persons sitting beside me during this meeting.
We're on it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Grace. The next item on communication I'd ask, Kristi Warren from Overture Design, if I can just give a short update on where we are as we proceed for any of our meetings. You're up.
Alright, so am I talking to you on the screen right now? Or am I not talking to you? Sorry. Literally, what do you got?
It's not communication.
And you need a schedule?
Just a sketch, a projected.
Overall schedule?
Overall timeline.
Okay. We haven't started yet, since we are on schedule and under budget.
That's where we want to be.
Okay. I'll do this. Okay, so, from a schedule standpoint, you guys are approving a resolution tonight for OCC master plan. So that kind of starts to kick some things off for us, very exciting things. We have started visioning, so last week, a group of us, some staff and administrators, went up to Dayton and spent two days visioning, talking about the future of schools, talking about the future of curriculum, the future of how we want to deliver education, and started coming up with some really great information content filters for us to use to make decisions as we go through the design process on all the different projects. So we're going to be continuing visioning over the next few weeks, at which point we will transition into what we call the program requirements, the programming phase of the project. And so, really the end of the calendar year, we're going to be taking each of the four projects, which as a reminder, the four projects that are going to be taking place is a new early elementary building, additions to the high school, additions to the junior high, and additions to the intermediate school. So by the end of the calendar year, our plan is to be, for the most part, through programming, so that we have a good firm list of spaces that are going to be designed into each of those four different projects. So the total number of classrooms, we want the total number of STEM spaces, project lab spaces, all that stuff. So we're going to be working really hard over the next few months with teachers, with administrators, with some students, to brainstorm over the programming of all the different buildings. At which point we will then transition into schematic design, which kicks off the early calendar year next year. And we're going to be doing all four projects simultaneously in design. We are going to push some of the projects a little bit quicker than other projects. The intermediate school addition is smaller in scope, so we're going to push on that project pretty hard to get that one through design and under construction and built sooner rather than later, so that we can have new square footage as soon as we can, because there's no slowing down in enrollment, as we know. So the four projects will open at different times because there is more to the design process for each of the four. The early elementary being the biggest and the most, scope will take the longest to get through the design process. Intermediate will be first, and then the junior high and high school have similar scope, similar timeframe, so we'll try and get those to open after the intermediate, so that we can start using that square footage as soon as we can. So we've got schematic design coming early next year, followed by design development, followed by construction documents. And all those are phases in the design process, from laying out simple floor plans to actually designing elevations, and what the buildings are going to look like, to construction documents, which is literally putting together a very large sets of documents that are going to tell our contractors how to build the building. So those design processes take 12 to 18 months to do, depending upon the size of the project. So we're still quite a ways out before we're going to have a shovel in the ground, but a lot of really exciting work coming up. And it's going to be fairly fast-paced, so you're going to probably see quite a bit of me, as is Greg. And we're going to be scheduling a lot of meetings, because our goal is to be able to sit down and hear from all of the different staff, be able to hear from the students, be able to hear from the different users of the buildings, so that I am not making decisions on how you want to teach your kids or what the spaces are. You guys are making those decisions with us. So, that's about it, we're scheduled, Greg, is there anything else you want me to cover?
Maybe a little crossing.
Maybe a little crossing?
That's me.
That's you.
Thanks, Kristi.
Thank you very much, Kristi.
Next item that I'd like to update the board upon is our renovation of Mayville Crossing, our central office. Things are coming right along, so we'll update out earlier this afternoon. We're really coming along, and we're approaching probably around October, versus January, October, our first walk-through on the finish end of the project. They have all the ceilings up, carpet's in, most of the flooring's down, lights in. There's some roofing work that has to be done, and over on the public side, there are work in progress. I'm doing the finish-up on the meeting spaces that are over on the public side of the renovation. As I mentioned, there is another tech aspect to this project as far as looping that office in on our school network. And there's fiber that needs to be run from our high school down to that office to place us onto the school network. So that projected timeframe is from slow guy is sometime around middle to the end of November. Next month you'll see a furniture package that's going to go out of bid here in the next week or two, and we hope to have a furniture package vendor for you to approve at our October 23th board meeting. So that's the update on our central office.
So when is the first meeting going to be, board meeting there?
Well, we have to have furniture in place, that is...
Originally, we thought it would be October.
Well, October 15th is the construction phase, was, is supposed to be done by October 15th. It's going to take, if we look at board approving a furniture package for purchase from going through the bid process, after we award the bid to a vendor, it's probably six to eight weeks prior to the furniture being delivered. So with the networking and everything not coming in till the middle and end of November, it's going to look like the December-January timeframe when we can actually be open for business at that. We're on budget, we have, I think, only seen probably 11 or 12 chain orders, but it's not a major, significant portion of the whole process.
To note, surprise this?
Yeah. And the last item that I'd like to share with the board, late last, or last Thursday afternoon, the Eastern Cincinnati Conference put out a news release indicating that they had a team leaving the league, and they were seeking letters of interest from districts who might like to look at joining that league. If you recall, we had a pretty extended conversation about this last March, as they were looking to expand by two teams. I've asked our A.D. to come talk with the board about the possibility of our sending a letter of interest. They set an October 17 deadline to send a letter of interest. And this kind of just popped up here, and I shared some information with you via email last Thursday. And I wanted to follow up with Keith, and he also had framed a recommendation for the board that's on the board agenda for your consideration tonight. So Keith, I'd like to turn this over to you, and have you talked to the board about this?
All right, thank you, Greg. I know this has been a discussion for a while now. What I wanted to do today was just, and I'm sure you shared a lot of research, I've read through it all. I wanted to just touch back on a few points, I'm going to cover kind of four areas, as to why I and the large portion of our athletic department head coaches and other things are on board for this transition, pursuing this opportunity. First and foremost, I gave you guys a packet, and that is full of 13 letters from head coaches that I received in the last 72 hours in support of this decision. It was 13 for 13 in favor of pursuing the ECC conference. Those that did not submit one, it was just because I did not get them in time, not necessarily that they weren't interested. So I'm going to cover some different topics in a PowerPoint here, and as I do, I'm going to be referencing some notes made in those, so you don't necessarily have to read through all of them right now. But the first thing we wanted to bring up, and I know you guys are aware of this, this is the current layout of the SWAC Conference and the Eastern Cincinnati Conference, and our travel distance is one of our biggest concerns. Currently, if you see here in the SWAC, Edgewood, Harrison, Mount Healthy, Northwest, Ross, Talawanda, are primarily located on the western part of Cincinnati. The travel times there average out to be 32.3 miles in over 45 minutes in travel time on a regular basis. Thing to point out here is that a lot of our smaller sports that play a lot of games, like soccer or right now volleyball, they travel to each one of these every season, and then some all on weeknights. So that's very important that we wanted to point that out. On the other side here, the ECC, we do acknowledge that Withrow is the team that is recommending, they're trying to leave the conference back to the G-Mag downtown Cincinnati. With them out, the averages had adjusted from the last packet you were given to under 20 miles in travel time and just over 30 minutes travel time for our teams. So more on geography, again, I'm going to touch on geography, our affiliation with the other schools, some financial information, and obviously our scheduling competition that we feel very important. So geography here, the distance traveled, Ally Fisher, who's our athletic director of the junior high, I thought she made a very profound statement in her letter that says dismissal's at 2:50, and we try to load buses by 3:00 P.M. to get to our away games, which I think is very problematic for all of our programs. Matt Tolliver, who's with the head women's basketball coach, says it's what's best for the kids leaving school for Talawanda at 3:00 P.M. and returning at 10:30 on school night is not in the best interest of our student athletes. And our golf coach, who has another travel issue coming up here tomorrow, we have four away league matches. So on top of the travel distance to those schools, there are also off-site competition venues that are even further away than the schools themselves. They have four league matches that were 26, 43, 51 miles away, and 44, all one way. So as you can see, as we're traveling to the west side on a regular basis, it obviously affects our, you know, the endurance of our kids, getting their schoolwork done, all of this is taking place on weeknights. And obviously, fan support, parent support, and other things, we receive a lot of emails and things, just wondering why we're doing this so much. It's all because of our league affiliation. Another, if you'd go back just really quick, sorry. Rivalries, this is a point of contention in a lot of the coaches' letters that many of the athletes are familiar with, are friends with, and players, with players on the team in the ECC. A lot of them have grown up playing with these teams, these neighboring schools, and that came up a lot in their requests. Two things on the bottom there that I added, we struggle to get assigned good officials in rescheduling of games. This is something that may not have come up, but just in my three short months here has become a major issue. The majority of SWAC officials are on the west side of town. I have heard complaints directly to me about traveling out here, way out there, they call it. And so we've struggled when a game gets canceled, or a game gets moved, or we need to reschedule. We struggle to get officials, and oftentimes they dictate the time that our game's going to start based on when the officials are available, not when our facility is available. So it's become very, very difficult in terms of scheduling. And then I think our students and communities could attend more away games if we are playing a lot of those games in bordering districts. So scheduling and competition, there's a few things to point out here that were pretty consistent. Some SWAC schools did not field freshman and/or junior varsity teams. We had some really real issues recently. Schools like Mount Healthy and Northwest, they dropped their JV soccer teams. Talawanda did as well, our varsity soccer's over there playing now, and our JV was unable to play. They're playing a non-sanctioned team tomorrow in a junior varsity soccer game against a club team, because we did not have enough games, they lost six games before the season started, because our league affiliates notified us a month before that they weren't going to be able to field junior varsity teams. On the opposite side of that, this new conference, they field every team that we have in our building at every level. So all the schools can field a varsity and junior varsity team in the ECC, it came up a few times, that was Coach Muturbo of our women's soccer program. Some SWAC schools did not field teams at all for our sanctioned sports. No SWAC school has men's or women's lacrosse, which, I'm sorry, I believe one has men's lacrosse. But that's the fastest-growing sport on the east side of Cincinnati, so I feel it's very important to get into a conference that aligns us for the growth of that program. An 8-10 team conference that fields the same number of teams at our level to significantly improve our scheduling issues. Again, there's our head golf coach, only five schools even have a golf team in the SWAC, so most of the ECC have varsity and JV teams. So we are, field a varsity and JV teams, some of the affiliates of the SWAC Conference did not even have a junior varsity golf team. So again, we're out looking for matches wherever we can very late in the evening. Lastly, it provides our program's consistent competitive schedules across the board. So when you have that rotation of teams, right now, three of the seven teams in the SWAC are Division II. This was something brought up by our head softball coach. So what that does is, it doesn't help us when they're doing rankings for the postseason, because oftentimes you may have a better record, for instance, football issue, we could be 82 and not potentially make the postseason, while someone who's 6-4 in the ECC because of the Harvard Point system could potentially get in. So it's just another thing that I wanted to bring up here today. So playing Division II schools also hurts us when it comes to rankings for the state tournament, so I thought that was very profound, and wanted to share that as well. So school and community affiliation, I think the stability of the league's very important. The second part there, if we don't mean now, we may be left independent, there are obviously conversations going on. I have no proof to back any of that, but people are concerned that the SWAC may fold, and rather than being independent, I think this is a great opportunity to jump on a ship that's going in the right direction. Student athlete exposure, we have an interesting story, one of our juniors on our soccer team, our women's soccer team, received a scholarship off of the University of Cincinnati a couple Saturdays ago after playing, I believe it was at Mount Notre Dame. And the coaches there were there to watch a young lady on the opposing team. So a lot of our coaches have brought up to me that exposure, playing better competition closer to Cincinnati in some larger schools, will reap the benefits of that exposure for our kids. Also, media coverage and things along those lines, just being affiliated with that group and our brand exposure is very, very important. Influencing consideration for staying in or moving to the district, right, wrong, or indifferent, I think that athletics does play a part in decisions on where to attend school, or where to even move. And so this is something that came up, that affiliation with this conference could potentially attract kids or keep them in the district rather than leaving for athletic purposes. A couple of quotes that I wanted to share here was our head volleyball coach, "We would have more consistent competition, better attended games and fan support from ECC teams, centralized rivalries, closer travel, and better coverage from the news, colleges, and scouts." Coach Bond, who was our head cross-country and head track and field coach, when the decision was made during the levy issues to join the SWAC, it was probably the correct one. But things are different now, we have gone from six boys in tracks to over 50. Pay to participate is down, and enrollment is up. It is time for LMHS to move conference and aspire to do more than just land deep titles. And Coach Greg was here today, our head baseball coach, "Many of our kids have goals to compete at the next level in certain sports, and joining the ECC would give these student athletes more exposure by playing better competition." So this is a breakdown I shared with you guys last week via email. This is something that I put together through the U.S. News and World Report in 2018, talking about the best high schools in Ohio. Little Miami is listed at the top there, a state ranking of 75, graduation rate of 98, college readiness 31.6, and enrollment, which is higher than that now, they had listed 11 and 12. If you look at the averages across the board there at the bottom of the SWAC, several of the schools do not even have a ranking, graduation rate below 90s, college readiness just over 20, and enrollment under 900, and declining. The ECC we're much more in line with, see, Walnut Hills enrollment of 2,700 is grade 7 to 12, so that average of 1,700 is probably closer to 1,600 or so, which is where we're headed. College readiness and graduation rates are obviously where we want to be, and where we are closer to them in terms of graduation rate. All but one school, and I think it's skewed a little bit because West Claremont's a new district, but all of those are ranked, the highest is a 51 and above. So I just think that being affiliated with those schools and being mentioned in the same breath is something that's very impressive as well. Financial implications, just three things I wanted to touch on briefly. Obviously, increased gate revenue. We had a junior high football game against Kings, it was a seventh grade and eighth grade game, and I think we brought in just about as much as we did for a freshman JV game against West Claremont. So that travel and those neighboring school districts is, I think, very, very impactful in terms of gate revenue, even for the smaller sports, you just see an increase in soccer games and everything else when we're playing schools that are closer by. Bus travel, I think obviously with the travel that I shared with you, the significant decrease in mileage, the wear and tear on the buses and all of that is obviously a positive. And I think there's an opportunity for increased sponsorship when we're affiliated with those neighboring communities as well. And then lastly, I wanted to share, I couldn't leave Nate on this, so he had a nice letter as well, but he had something that I thought was really good in there. While all this is fine and dandy, and we, our coaches are very excited, they know in order to compete and create a very positive experience for our student athletes that we can't just hop in and not do anything about it, that in order to prepare as best as possible in terms of competitive balance, I think it's imperative to evaluate athletic facilities resources, pay to participate of the member schools, the current ECC, and develop a plan now to get on par with those resources so that we are best prepared to compete 2021 and beyond in all of our sports and academic teams. So there is a bit of a curve there, that while we want to be affiliated with that, that something that has to be aligned, and kind of that commitment to go in that direction. So with all those positives, we understand that from a competitive standpoint there are some concerns that we would have to work through. But growing enrollment can only help that. Thank you. That was all.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Thank you very much, Keith.
How far is the farthest goal from us?
Currently?
In the ECC?
The ECC, if you could head back, I think it's West Claremont or Anderson.
Your back page here has the numbers, you have back page.
Okay.
On this one.
Yeah, Anderson is about 29 miles, 40 minutes.
So looking at...
I think currently, Anderson is the longest at 40 minutes.
So the total, the total mileage that you have in the SWAC is 193.8, right?
Yes, but I did update it by removing Withrow on my PowerPoint, so I apologize. This is because I found out that that's the part of the...
ECC is 163, so we're talking at 30 mile difference overall.
Correct.
I did want to ask just one quick thing, your last slide there, Nate's slide, and this came up the last time we talked, you talked about that learning curve, facilities. And to compete at this level, I'm just going to be honest with you, I don't, I'm really struggling here on whether or not we can compete at that level, especially with the facilities that we have. So from the slide that I see up here is that they're, basically it was a very kind way of saying we're going to have to spend money on facilities. And am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, I think that, to be honest, every sport looks at this a little bit differently. We have a soccer program that can't field games and has beaten multiple teams 92. We have a football program that's just now hitting their stride in the current conference that they're in. While they talk about improving facilities, we are getting a brand-new weight room which ultimately is going to help train those kids. The type of stadium you play in or whatnot, we're not recruiting kids like a college and have to have the Taj Mahal. The kids that come in are ultimately going, need to be prepared to compete. So then from a football standpoint, the weight room's important and things along those lines, and practice space, which we do a great job with. So some of those things, nothing astronomical that says, you know, do we have some things that we would need to begin, start to move towards, our downline that those schools have, potentially, but it's not that we're going to lose kids because we don't have them, they're not choosing between our school and their school necessarily. But every coach would like the mecca in terms of facilities, but it's not detrimental to being able to compete, in my opinion.
Randy, the other thing, last BAC meeting with all that we have going on with the additions at the high school, we're approving a wrestling facility with the addition, that's already been targeted in bond dollars for realigning space and moving the weight room, or adding some locker rooms. Those are things that contribute to the quality and the facilities of the athletic program. One area that I've asked the BAC to do, I've asked them to come work with Keith, to look at all of our site, and I think that there's a decision that we need to make as a... at all of our site, and I think that there's a decision that we need to make as a district as we look at this facility and we think six or seven years down the road when that OSCC project, we become eligible to do that. And I think when we look at the facility here and our need, I think we need to do an analysis of, does it make sense for us to do fundraising and to make renovations and additions to our current facility and stadium? And we have to come to a decision as to whether or not we're going to put our money into this facility, and the football stadium is going to be the football stadium for the district. And when we get out there at that six or seven year mark and we look at having to build a new high school, if we're going to make a commitment to doing that here, then that means that this is going to be, we're all in on this being our football stadium and our football facility. And so I wanted some stakeholders to take a look at that, because we are at a point with attendance and with success of our programs, where the stadium needs to have additional bleachers, expansion. We are, no question about it, going to have to invest in a track replacement and yet another year or two turf replacement. We're going to need to replace the replacing tennis courts probably in very short order. I think we've got probably one more season left on them, and that's going to probably be projected for the summer. So that's where I think we have to look at blocking some of our PI dollars and lending that with fundraising. And so I wanted to get some business folks' eyes on it. Okay?
All right. I think the important thing you say there too great is to focus on us. You're not going to catch Ed Wood, who's currently in our conference, or a West Claremont who's a brand spanking new school. It's what's in the best interest of, it's our enrollment, what's in the best interest of our students and student athletes. We can compete wherever we are based on our enrollment, in my opinion. I also think that this attracts better coaches when we have openings, the fact that we're affiliated there, which in turn impacts your programs as well.
So you don't think, you know, this is the first time we can, I don't know, since I've been on the board. So you don't think, and I know it's not next year, so you don't think that we're going to go back to being beat down again because that's not.
Well, I don't think that way. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and I see a great opportunity. So that's just how I am, that's how our coaches are. They see a great opportunity to take this thing that's rocking and rolling to the next level, and I think it's exciting for everybody. I'll also say this, we have, we have a lot of programs that are five now, not just the football program, that are really, really excited about this opportunity.
But I think, I think what I was trying to say though is, I mean, let's be honest, when you're looking at gate receipts and things like that, normally the driver of that is your football stadium. And it hasn't been that long ago when that football stadium, you could have drove the train to it and not hit anyone. I think that's a concern, because one of the things that we have to do as a board is we have to look at our stakeholders and say, this is why we took your dollars and spent in this direction. And in what, three years, we're going to be coming back for an operating level. And I'm sure that's on a lot of people's minds.
Right. I think, I think all I can say in my position is that we have a great football coach, we have great kids.
There are a lot of good coaches.
Something more to happen, we have great people that would want to be here and especially affiliated with that conference. And I think with the increase in enrollment, we just keep moving forward with that new weight room, new turf, new everything else that is a recipe for success for.
Something I mentioned today, which I don't, I didn't know before, is that our teams are already competing with some of these teams and not in games and doing very, very well?
Yes, they are.
Okay. That was of interest to me. I'm not aware that we're doing that.
I think our girls just beat Kings this past Saturday.
Free zero. Free.
And I think what you hear of staff, as far as my recommendation and staff saying to you is, we, I get it, I've been here for the bad times, and I get being beaten down, I get six fifty-one pay to play, I get almost having no athletics, I get all of that. But I think we're at a point where we really need to begin to look forward and plan, plan in a positive way, for we are going to get better. We are going to go and be, and I don't think you get better unless you seek a higher level of competition. So I've heard, I've heard that argument, and let me play devil's advocate here. Michael, I had this conversation. I've heard that five years ago, we were playing teams that were much better than us, and we were getting beat down, our kids were being very humble. And I don't, and I can't speak progressive where I'm talking about me. I don't know that I want a return of that.
That was football.
You know, you're direct, that was football.
That was one sport.
Well, but that's your biggest sport, that's your gate receipts sport, let's be honest. That is, that's what, that's what the public looks at, that's what the public comes to, that's what the public visits. And we have to look at it as a board for all of our stakeholders, not just our coaches or anyone. And I agree with you, I agree with you a hundred percent.
But I'd ask the board to look at the other stakeholders who are also active.
And a lot of our stakeholders are riding the bus the other side of the counter, right on the basis.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I'll just close with this, I just think that the, if this opportunity passes us by, I don't think there's another one coming down the pipe. That's my biggest concern.
I guess I have a comment, since, give me a minute, I've beat myself up over this all day long, like I did last time we talked about this. I'll agree with Mr. Moss and Mrs. Grace, I don't want to go back to where we were because I've been there on several levels in my, in my career as a coach and a player. It's no fun. I'm very proud of what our school has done. You can, you can stay in the present, we can become very stagnant. I want to say, I want to say that I'm very proud of our administration team, of Mr. Power, Mr. Gunn, all the principals. They have put this, they have put this district on the right path to advance. Now, are we going to have to crawl? Yes, we are. And I'm not, I'm not saying, I don't want any parents mad at me, but right now, right now, our kids cannot compete with some of these other schools. They're bigger, faster, stronger, that's just the new mantra of sports. It used to be one, no pain, no gain, but, but I understand, I understand both sides of this. And in my opinion, it would probably be better to move ahead. You know, you gotta, you gotta really be careful what you wish for for a few, for a few years, because it's going to be downright hard. But yeah, I think, just like I said.
There's a quote I once heard that stuck with me and said, there are pioneers and there are settlers. And I like to be a pioneer, how I'm going to be in this thing in the future, no matter what's the problem. We've got great coaches that are dedicated, and our kids are good, and there's going to be more coming in the building.
We do, but our staff has done a wonderful job. I'm very proud of our staff that have taken us to where we are, so.
Can I have a comment? We, as a board, we hired these people to come in and do exactly what we do, coach our kids. They're the experts here, we are not. While we have to be careful with the direction the board goes, I have faith in the people that we have put in the decisions, and if we have a football coach, a waiting football coach who's saying, I believe this is the move we need to make, keeps aware of the modifications and the things coming down the pipe, and they say that this is the direction they want to go, I don't know how we cannot support that.
Thank you, Steve. All right. Thank you, everybody.
Good job.
Excellent job, excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
All right. Okay, at this time, we have a comment, community comments on agenda items.
Tim Wilson.
Tim Wilson.
Tony, I think, Tony, I think it was my name wrong.
Oh, Tony, that's right.
Tony Wilson.
Oh, Tony Wilson. Quiet, stand up, sir.
Yeah. So, so I, one is about three, about five, um, not as much as the line myself, but one thing I have to really say, not even drugs, you can complete reading what the air should set, because our kids are in such a wide range, it's sort of my finger in the palm where they are. I have two sons who play football at the underage. It's ludicrous that we haven't driven out. You know, to just give you an idea of like what our Saturdays are like, and this is for anybody who has kids and grades like kindergarten through sixth. So our game starts at nine, and there's a wind, leave our house at seven. So I text all my other kids, I'm not going to be back until four or five o'clock, because my, we leave at seven, we get there at eight for practice, the game starts at nine. This game finishes, this because we're so far away, we're stuck for like two or three hours, because there's not enough time to come home. And so now, back to you, Saturdays are when you learn your English. And if you can get to anything, you're paralyzed, because you're stuck in these schools an hour away. It's a huge hardship. And what really is hard, and I was sort of asked this in my life, you know, I see all these young families who have babies, toddlers, they're stuck there too, all day long with kids crying, you know, they're packing up, die, wives. You know, our neighbor, she told my wife, she's three kids who play football, underage, after about the fourth hour, her baby's crying, she said, we get sick, we're going to both of us cry, because we're going to be stuck there for another four or five, you know, whatever. I mean, it really is huge, huge impact. And you think, how many people you have in the high school for grades, right? You think about how many athletes you have from kindergarten on up, the impact is much greater than that sheer number of students, right? And so I would just really ask, not consider this in terms of the high school. I mean, like I said, it ruins our, the entire day, because you're there for hours. And looking at the list of schools and southern districts, most of those are close enough, we can wait until, you know, we're kids, we can wait until, we bring the kids home, things like that. So it really is not just about considering this is going to be better for our high school. I think it really is because it's going to be better for all of our young families, because it really, it just kills not stuck on the other side of Cincinnati, driving from downtown. And if you need to go somewhere, I don't like that, right? I don't keep moving, I feel afraid to leave because you know what you're going to drive me. So this seems like a no-brainer to leave, for all the reasons I said, plus everything from the athletic status. I mean, I can't find a single factor to this, other than I hear people saying, well, we don't want to be back to the old days. I think we're getting better for that, but I'm just saying, don't just look at that. I think you're going to have a much happier community if you consider this from football.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson.
Pat Kilgore.
Pat Kilgore? Yeah, I'd like to, I had a bunch of stuff down that actually Keith went through, just took a bunch of notes. I sent out an email several months ago when I heard, read the minute notes from when we first considered this, and I was, I can't tell you how disappointed I was in reading those minute notes, because it was a football-driven decision. And I'm a football player, my son was a football player, I'm a diehard fan, I was out at Talawanda the other day watching the game, love seeing the, where our programs come, come from, from previous years, but man, just so many, so many stats, and Keith went through a bunch of them. But I just did like the non-football sports, the forty-two to and fro's that Coach Craig has to deal with and, and Coach Katerba has to deal with, equates to over a thousand bus miles. And I know Little Miami travels well, I was at Talawanda, and we had almost as many fans, if not more, than Talawanda had. I was just at a Mount Healthy soccer game where we had double the amount of parents than Mount Healthy had at their home stadium. So I know that Little Miami travels well, and I did a very conservative estimate, and this was back before we took out Withrow out of the ECC. And the parent miles, if we only have fifteen parents show up to each game, which I know is double that, it's sixteen thousand miles a year. I mean, you could go around the earth with the number of, of parent miles that we have to and from. Scheduling with the ten teams, a ten-team league, my goodness, it makes life so much easier scheduling for all sports. And then what I really wanted to, wanted to mention was, it's not just a football decision. Even though football is a gate receipt sport, it's not just a football decision. You've got a hundred football athletes, you've got a thousand other athletes out there. My daughter's one of them. And just the Friday Night Lights, everybody loves that. I look at this as, there's a quote from the movie Miracle, I think everybody's seen that. Great, let's see, great moments are born from great opportunities. We have an opportunity now to join the ECC. It'll go away. That opportunity won't be here in a few years. And then I'm going to give you a personal example. Last couple weeks, Thursday night, August thirtieth, the soccer team, see Courtney over there, Courtney was playing at Talawanda. The next Thursday night, the soccer team was playing at Harrison, my daughter's on that team. I know Courtney takes a crazy class load. My daughter's first class in the morning is AP Biology, and then she goes to other honors and AP classes throughout the day. We got home from Harrison, the bus got back here at ten forty-five at night, she's got a fifteen-minute drive home, my daughter's driving home at night, scary. I want her to leave the car at home and try telling her that, and let, let me come get her. But she gets home at eleven fifteen. She's got an AP Bio test on Friday morning. She's up till two thirty at the breakfast bar studying to get her ninety-seven on the AP Bio test. This isn't a Friday Night Lights issue. The football players can sleep in on Saturday. The soccer players, the baseball players, they got to get up at six o'clock the next morning, go take tests. I see this as the easiest decision possible to join a league like the ECC. I find it no brainer.
That's all. Okay. The Treasurers reports and financials, as we need to amend the agenda to remove the executive session off of the end. So I wanted to motion to amend the agenda to remove that executive session.
I'll move.
Mr. Cremes, Mr. Naeput?
I'll accept.
Mr. Nae. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cremes?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Nae?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate you working with me. Okay, at this time, we entertain the Treasurers reports, financials, Mr. Gunn.
Yes, as for the board's approval of the monthly bank records only, investment lender, cash, fund, sum, ready appropriations in the.
I'll move.
Ms. Grace?
Second.
Mr. Seaver? Okay, any comments or questions? Mr. Gunn, did you want to review anything?
No, this, at month ending, August two thousand and eight, which is the second month of the current fiscal year.
I'll move.
Okay, I'm sorry, I handle it. I handle it, sorry, my bad. Roll call, please.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nae?
Yes.
Mr. Cremes?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Seaver?
Yes.
I got caught up in the numbers there. Sorry.
That's it. We can extend our item two as the board's approval of the contract set listing.
I'll move.
All right, Ms. Grace?
I'll second.
Cremes?
The two contracts, two top contracts with complete care providers for student transportation, and then the bottom one is Cincinnati Children's Home for tuition for autistic, for autistic students.
All right, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Nae?
Yes.
Mr. Cremes?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Next under item three, as for the board's approval of the permanent appropriations for the current fiscal year nineteen.
I'll move.
Mr. Nae?
Second.
Mr. Cremes? Any comments on that?
Yeah, these are the appropriations for the current fiscal year, they can be amended, however, as things change throughout the year, so we have the amendments there to bring those to each.
Questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Cremes?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nae?
Yes.
Next under item four, as for board's approval of a donation.
I'll move.
Ms. Junay?
Second.
Ms. Cermens?
This is a donation from Cameron, what's her name, sorry, is it Lomond?
Lomond.
Lomond. It's for, it's a cash donation for a garden tower purchase, which you can grow plants and everything inside, move around and so on. It's for Mr. First Class at the intermediate school. Really appreciate it.
I am pretty neat.
Yeah, it looks pretty good. I'm going to go and check it.
Roll call please.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
That's all I have. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gunn. At this time, we will entertain superintendent's reports and recommendations. Mr. Power?
I'm on short leash.
Do you have, do you need more work?
I have some, I have some.
Oh, okay.
I'd ask the board's approval for all items, this is under number one, personnel.
Ms. Junay?
I'll second.
Ms. Grace? Questions or comments, roll call please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval for item number two, job description for maintenance worker.
I'll move.
Mr. Cermens?
Second.
Mr. Seaver? Okay, any questions on this? If not, roll call please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
I'd ask the board's approval for item three, appointment of student board representative.
I'll move.
I'll second. Ms. Junay and Ms. Cermens? All right, questions or comments, roll call please.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Congratulations, board. I'd ask the board's approval for item number four, designation of bus stops. This is something that we do on annual basis.
I'll move.
Mr. Cermens?
I'll second. I never saw so many, I know, so that's the longest thing I ever went through in my life.
Lots of new streets.
Thousands of stops.
Yep, lots of. Okay, if you have any comments or questions, roll call please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval of resolution eighteen dash zero zero nine, a resolution of intent expedited local partnership program and maintenance requirement.
I'll move.
Ms. Grace?
Second.
Ms. Cermens?
I'd like to just note that there are pre-options in this resolution. When we become eligible to do an OSCC project, one of the requirements is that we designate a half a mil of maintenance and we can either take that out of our local PI fund, designate that, or at the time, that board out in the future could actually include that as a part of the partnership.
Roll call please.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
The next resolution is again related to the OFCC and I'd ask the board's approval of that resolution. Eighteen dash zero one zero.
That is correct, that's what I've got here, yes.
I'll move. Mr. Seaver?
I'll second.
Ms. Junay? Okay, no questions? Roll call please.
Ms. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Just for the record, it's not me down here, like I said.
No, it's not.
Usually is, but.
It is, this time. We'll move it.
I think I need my Seaver aside. I'd ask the board's approval for item seven, eighteen dash zero one one, resolution in the Ohio High School Facility Construction Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program Agreement. It's a short read, it's a hundred and fifty-six pages and if you're having trouble sleeping at night, I would highly recommend it.
I'll move.
Ms. Grace?
Second.
Ms. Cermens? Questions on page seven three there? Roll call please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval for item number eight, a memorandum of agreement with management in common. Ms. Junay?
Second.
Ms. Cermens? Roll call please.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Ms. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
I'm going to help down here.
Yes, you do.
Item number nine, I'd ask the board's approval to, for item number nine, this is the conference affiliation, seeking your support and permission to send a letter of interest to apply and the ECC seeks applications and should the ECC extend us an invitation to join the league to accept that invitation. So we're committed to the invitation? Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Ms. Grace?
Sorry, and I want to be able to write, if the board supports this, a strong letter of interest so that if they were inclined, that they might just extend this invitation.
Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval for item number ten, the two thousand eighteen nineteen fall books.
I'll move.
Ms. Grace?
He might keep me for a little while.
Questions?
I'm going to get my resume ready.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Cermens?
Yes.
Ms. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd ask the board's approval for item eleven, we have two board policy updates that are second reading. Ms. Junay?
Second.
Ms. Cermens? Roll call please.
Mr. Haas?[1641.12]